I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Here.
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 Thank you. Public participation. Any members of the public would like to have a statement? Please come to one of these tables and sit, have a seat.
Jim.
Sean. Name and address, please.
Can I push the button?
Yeah, push the button with the little person on it. It'll, the bike will turn red.
No, it's like a microphone.
The little pr-
I'm gonna give you a copy this time, so thank you. This one?
The little man. There you go.
That's one too we got, we're on.
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I'm speaking tonight for 173 mayoral petitioners. But first, let me express our condolences to Rachel Ryan on the passing of your mother, a great political leader in her own right. We also want to thank you, Rachel, because you had the lone dissenting vote when the council accepted the Kane majority charter revision report in July. Thank you for that. Our group has always said that we will accept the people's choice regarding a mayor or a manager in a referendum, but we want that referendum. You see, we believe Charter Revision Commission Chairman Kane and his six colleagues blocked our 173 petitioner, and that isn't fair. So sadly, the council will now place the Rob Kane majority charter revision report on the November 3 ballot. And this report doesn't give us our referendum. So while Woodbury, Middlebury, Waterbury, Thomaston, Morris, Bethlehem, all our bordering towns elect their chief executive, the council has blessed the Rob Kane seven conclusion that we don't deserve the first referendum on this issue in 36 years. Whereas yet, you now have one, place the tediously long Rob Kane majority 11-question report on the November 3 ballot. Watertown gave President Trump his largest statewide percentage win in 2016. And now in 2020, in a COVID environment, President Trump is pleading with his backers to vote in person. And you, the Watertown Republican majority, have now put the 11 questions on the ballot. It's like an AP civics final exam instead of a simple manager versus mayor advisory referendum. So our petitioning group is going to fight for 11 noes. We want to reject the Kane win report as our way of saying, you ignored our petitioners. We now want this referendum after the Kane report is defeated. By placing the Kane majority report on the presidential ballot, you have in effect hijacked the election. We urge all Watertown Oakville voters to enter 11 quick noes on the charter question, then vote for the federal and state candidates they want. That's what this election's all about. Our voter lines will now be very long as people read this elaborate local government quiz, which is also burdensome for the town clerk and the election officials to count. In nearby Waterbury, they are going to do a quick yes/no on the Columbus statute. We could have had a quick yes/no on mayor versus manager. Instead, we have perhaps the most complicated ballot in the state. I apologize to our voters and election officials. They deserve better. Respectfully submitted, Sean Butterley for the petitioners. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Anybody else?
Kathryn Camara, 31 Cottage Place in Oakville. As you know, I would like to understand how the council feels about Charter Section 202, which Rob Kane's recent line-by-line review did not change. I'm interested in hearing a discussion among all the council members. As it stands now, the charter allows elected officials to move out of state and simply change their address to the registrar of voters to one of someone else in Watertown. Thereby, they don't pay any taxes to our town, but remain elected officials. I think that that's a problem. Case Duplessis did an honorable thing when she resigned when she moved out of state. Section 202 should have been addressed by the Charter Revision Commission. This council needs to recognize that there is still work needed on the charter and appoint a new commission to get the job done. We can't have this happening. I also have a few issues after attending the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting last week. I was told the council member Ken Demirz can serve on both the council and the Planning and Zoning Commission. P&amp;Z chairman Richard Antonetti told me that Rachel Ryan had to resign from the Charter Revision Commission because she would not have been able to vote on the CRC report as a council member. That means Ken Demirz will not be able to vote on appointments to the P&amp;Z Commission as a council member. So why is he allowed to continue to serve on P&amp;Z? While Rachel Ryan could have recused herself from the vote on the CRC report, Ken Demirz cannot now be allowed to recuse himself from a vote regarding P&amp;Z appointments. It can't be both ways. It smacks of sexism. In addition, P&amp;Z chairman Antonetti said that Carl Mancini served on both the town council and a commission in the past. That was likely over a decade ago and under a different council. You have set the precedent only a few months ago when Rachel Ryan had to resign from the CRC. If Ken Demirz will continue to serve on the town council, planning and zoning, and the Board of Tax Assessment appeals, I would like an explanation at the next meeting as to how he differs from Rachel Ryan. I have a further issue with the P&amp;Z chairman Antonetti's explanation of why the Republican members of P&amp;Z do not need to recuse themselves from applications of Eric Markowitz, chairman of the Republican Town Committee. Chairman Antonetti contends that the town council appoints the members of P&amp;Z, but he neglects to consider that those appointments come from nominations made by the Republican Town Committee. Therefore, there is perceived bias with these applications. The answer is either the Republican members of P&amp;Z must recuse themselves from decisions on applications by Eric Markowitz, or Mr. Markowitz must resign as chairman of the Republican Town Committee to avoid the obvious impropriety. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Camara. Anybody else? All right. Name and address, please.
Zooklallow, 97 Joshua Town Road. I was just curious if there was a charter or any laws that would not allow someone like Ken Demirz to serve on both boards or multiple boards.
Not that I'm aware, but that's a legal, that's a legal question.
Hey, I'm just curious if there was anything in writing that would prohibit a member from sitting on multiple boards.
Not that I'm aware of. Multiple voids, I believe, I believe that no one can have, can sit on more than two in our town charter. Correct? But, you know, we don't have people on three and four and five, it's just more than two.
So someone could sit on two boards and be completely within the charter?
Correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Hearing none. Public participation is closed. I have a motion to approve the minutes of August 18, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of August 18, 2020.
I have a second. Anybody?
Second.
Any additions or deletions? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Stain?
Stain.
Motion passes. Okay. Okay, Chairman's report.
Wait a minute. I make a motion to approve the minutes of September 1, 2020, special meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was supposed to be September 1. We didn't have to meet the first point, we didn't have a meeting, we approved 21. Same day.
Sorry.
So August 18, we did not have a meeting. The motion was for September 1, 2020, the special meeting. So I apologize, and the same, same motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Stain? Motion passes. Thank you. Same thing. Chairman's report. Ms. Camara, obviously, we're not going to talk about the planning and zoning this evening. Those are some significant questions. But your email, I will be addressing because it is about me. And so everybody knows what this is about. I'm gonna read the email that Ms. Camara, Camara had written to John Gavallas on September 1. Please forward to the council members to address at next meeting. How do the members of the council justify Wynn's chairmanship when he sold his property in Watertown and bought his property in South Carolina on April 3? How do the council members justify our charter allowing this and Rob Kane's line-by-line review not picking up on this obvious issue? I would like to hear discussion at this meeting. Thank you, Kathryn Camara. We're about to have a discussion about this. But first, I'm going to read from the town charter. Chapter 2, Officers and Elections. Section 202, elective officers, A, paragraph 2. Each member of the town council shall be a resident of the town for at least six months prior to his election. I've been here 30 years. And shall be registered as a voter of the town on or before the date of his election and throughout his term. Also voter, 30 years. I would like to give you an example of what I guess Ms. Camara is inferring. Let's just say a young single mom working as a waitress moves in with her mom in Watertown, and she wants to run for office. Ms. Camara's email insinuates she can't because she's too poor to own a home. In two emails received today, Ms. Camara states that my wife and I are not residents and not qualified to vote because we don't own the home we are living in. If true, her criteria would disenfranchise all our citizens who do not own property but rent or live with family. Is this society, is this the society we want to live in? I think not. In February, Ann and I started a conversation about retiring and starting a new chapter in our life. Selling our home, which we anticipated six months to a year to sell. To our surprise, we sold it in four days. It was exciting, but very concerning. Eventually, we would move to South Carolina, where we own several properties. Then the pandemic hit, affecting everyone. Ann and I had to make some significant changes to our plans, as did most. We not only had to take into consideration our family, children, and grandchildren, but being the chief executive of Watertown and Oakville, I had a responsibility that I was committed to. I didn't work for this town for 13 years to walk away in the middle of a pandemic with an unfinished business. Ms. Camara had a different idea. She was going to, she was gonna run me out of town, not only with her nefarious letters to the editor, but also by walking downtown and in front of my home for months with signs like, "Wynn leave now", "Wynn must leave now", "Get out of town, Wynn", and a few more. Ms. Camara also said she was outside my home almost every day for a month taking pictures. Don't know what that's all about. When my wife wrote a letter to the editor questioning Ms. Camara's behavior, Ms. Camara was at the police department in hours of the town time delivering the, their, to the homes and making a false, unfounded police report against my wife. Now, I've had, I've had, I've had the honor of being on the town council for 13 years and chairman for five as your representative. I have worked to make our community a better place to live, not asking for anything in return. And more importantly, I have not been accused of any wrongdoing until now. Ms. Camara has now called me a liar and a fraud in emails she sent to John Gavallas and Bob Porter, registrar of voters. She accused me of lying about my primary resident and voter's resignation. I challenge Ms. Camara to provide any and all legal documents that support her accusations that you must own property to be a resident and a voter of Watertown. My question to my citizens, who is the fraud or liar? Myself or Ms. Camara? I think I know that answer. To my colleagues, conclusion. On the council and all board commissioner members, and Republicans and Democrats, stay true to your vision and desire to work in our town. Make your decisions on what you think is right, legal, and in the best interest of Watertown and Oakville, and do not listen to bullies in this town. That, and do not let them influence, influence your decision because citizens at large know who those bullies are. Be proud of your service. I am. Town manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of items tonight. The Board of Education petitions for their offices are in place. We have some furniture to be delivered in the next week or so, and some IT work to be completed. The board anticipates moving into their new spaces by the end of the month. That is gonna complete the move of all of our town offices under one roof. As you may be aware, our grand opening went exceptionally well. I heard many positive comments from the public who attended. And lastly, I want to offer kudos to our town employees who made that day possible. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Subcommittees, we haven't had anyone in a while due to COVID, so we're gonna go right to the business. Tim, motion to A, please.
I make a motion to authorize the interim town manager to execute an amendment to the agreement with Paint Care Incorporated for the Connecticut Architectural Paint Recovery Program for Non-Household Hazardous Waste Collection and Waste Paint Management Services.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose? Stain? Motion passes. That's time. Obviously, it's doing pretty well, isn't it? Consider, a motion for B, please.
I move to set a special town meeting to be held on September 21, 2020, at 7:15 p.m. at the Watertown Town Hall to appropriate from the general fund $110,984 for the Hemingway Basketball Court's relocation project. Funds have been received through a grant from the state of Connecticut.
Have a second.
Second.
Discussion. Yes.
Is there a date for the start of the project?
I thought they already had.
For the basketball court?
Mr. Kavanaugh, are you here to answer that question?
Roy Kavanaugh, Director of Public Works, was a question, please.
I was just wondering if there's a date for the start of the relocation of the basketball court.
The basketball court relocation is well underway, has not yet been completed. There was a number of contractual issues, but the contractor had an opportunity to get started. So given the fact that the funds were in place, we decided to go for it.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Any questions? Ms. King and basically I are having a little difficulty counting because of the new system. So I'm going to ask for a hand vote for this record, for this, for this vote. All in favor, raise, raise your hand. All opposed? Stain? Record this, record the vote, please. Okay. C, motion.
I make a motion to consider a bid waiver for the purchase of a 2017 Ford Escape for the Public Works Engineering Department for an amount not to exceed $19,293 from J&amp;M Automotive Sales and Service.
Have a second.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. By hand. All in favor, by hand. Oppose? Stain? Thank you. Next motion.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $59,325 for tax refunds.
Have a second.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. Please raise your hand for all in favor. Oppose? Stain? Motion passes.
I make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the tax refund.
Have a second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, raise your hand. Oppose? Stain? Motion passes. Nine.
I make a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel, town manager candidate reviews. In attendance will be the town council members present, along with attorney Joseph Suma.
Second. I mean, all in favor? Second. We are now returned to executive session. We'll be back soon, hopefully. Okay, town council is now, uh, back in session. One call for a, uh, a motion.
I move to appoint Mark Raymo, town manager for the town of Watertown and authorize the negotiation of an employment contract by the next town council meeting on 9/21/20.
Have a second.
Second.
Okay, one second. And discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oh, raise your hand.
Raise your hand.
Sorry. All opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, re-adjourn.
Second. Second.
All in favor? Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Congratulations to Mark Raymo.